Again, I just called the meeting to order. Uh, Olivia.
Mr. Moskowski?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Earhart? Mr. Hodges?
Here. And just to let everybody know, Mr. Earhart advised me to eat with nine at ten. Folks, would you please rise? And have a moment of silence followed immediately by the flag of our country. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You say it.
He said he was leaving.
Alright, is everyone reviewed the meeting agenda? And prepare.
Mr. Chairman, the adoption of the meeting agenda is presented.
Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Moskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Alright, folks, now we have our public comment period. Speakers have one opportunity of three minutes per person as an individual or five minutes per group on non-public hearing matters. Anyone that would like to speak, please come forward now. And, you know, you know, Charles, please give the district in and your name.
Um, Charles here, I'm the second district. I will bring back to y'all's attention, I know you see it every day going on my way, through the pictures, video, everything, probably not a fraction. I have to take every part. I just want to raise y'all's attention and say we can work on it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Catherine, I thought we both were here.
It was bad timing. Good evening, the bond for August. And after the first of the year, I will be proud to say I'm from the fourth district. But I just wanted to come up here and say that I appreciate all that you gentlemen and Bobby have done for the county over the last few years. And also, I look forward to the next year. And I wish you all a very Merry Christmas. May God bless you and our town.
Merry Christmas. Thank you. Anyone else? Not seen anyone coming forward, I close this public comment period. Next item we have is I have some consent agenda. We have a motion, a comment.
I'm gonna stall because I'm trying to get there in time to get here for this.
That's fine.
I'll be brutal with consent agenda if we do it really slow.
I don't think we'll be rushed tonight. And she'd get out of here early. I'll say it really slow. Did he move for a second?
Yeah, now I need to factor what I asked for. This is probably worth looking at.
Alright, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Moskowski?
Who seconded?
Mr. Greenwood?
We have four of them.
I'll have to check the bottom please.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
And, under that, some are waiting on his wife to get here for this, where I'm in this. Would that everybody leave? Take five minutes, please.
We could let Joyce go, sure.
Yeah, that'll work. I know she'd wanna stay in, stay in this morning.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good to be back. I know I missed the last meeting, away on homework on the other side of the state because we do that home. And, wanted to, um, highlight a few things in our transportation briefing to make sure that we're all on the same page. I'm trying to keep these up to date. Um, in your, um, package, there's a mention of a construction project that's coming up on Route 608 Hazelwood Road. Um, we do have it on here twice because we, we do have it as a rural rustic for us to surface treat the unpaved road. But we're also, um, in the process of working with our environmental folks um, to, uh, do some work on the ditches as you come in off of 600. Um, that's that stream bed relocation project that you see. I wasn't sure if anyone explained what that was. So basically, the stream has kinda moved outside of where it normally was. Um, and it's creeping out into the roadway, which is causing some of the erosion that you see uh, along the edges there. Um, so we're gonna go in ahead of the project and fix that, um, area, re, um, define the ditches on either side and have it ready for the rural rustic. Um, that is, um, in, outside of the, um, rural rustic there at 608. So when we look at our six-year plan coming up in the future, um, hopefully, we'll be able to take some funds and maybe move that Hazelwood Road project forward to get it done before 2022. So, um, the dates are set in there because that's how the plan was set. But I just kinda wanted to connect the dots for those two, um, for that one. And also, um, exciting news is that our 360 and 30 intersection improvement there at Sharon Road is, um, going to be advertised in the spring of 2020. So we should have a contractor on for work right around the time school ends. Um, we'll be working with the school, um, to make sure that we know what dates. Um, we don't need to be in the roadway for games and anything like that. Because it's gonna be right there at that intersection. So we may need some assistance from law enforcement and school and students to kinda maneuver through there. So we'll do some outreach and some media, um, updates to make sure everything's okay with that. Um, if you're in West Point, um, you may have seen some lane closures going across the Elkhorn. We are doing some electrical work to update some of the electrical systems, to make sure that everything's good, um, for the backside span to open and close when it needs to. Um, another thing that I have is, um, about 632 here in the county over Harrison's Creek. Um, we are doing a total bridge replacement, um, in there. It said the planned start was December 15th, which is, the contractor is mobilizing. However, on January 8th, the road will close. There will be a detour. We will have message boards up in the next week to let people know ahead of time. And that is expected to be closed until October of 2020 unless the contractor finishes a little sooner. Um, and then we have some beam repairs on Route 360 over Mon Huen Creek, which should probably just be a lane closure, but that's coming out of February. We did receive a traffic engineer request, um, for that street. It was in your report for speed limit reduction around 620. We have not gotten, um, they sent, um, that report back. So that, we hopefully have an update for you in the January report. Um, and we have been doing some shoulder repairs along Route 30, 600, 618, 650. Um, unpaid roads, you may get calls from your constituents. I know that we're starting to see one-fourers for those because of the rain and the difference. Just trying to get to all of them in between the different, um, conditions and stuff. But we're gonna hopefully have this somebody to be here. And, um, we did do seven site plans and, um, issued two permits in the county. Um, and then I think that's all I have, unless you have any things for me.
She timed it perfectly, she just came in.
I'm trying to talk about my beat up.
Anyone have any questions?
Well, I, last time, we talked about the intersection of 30 and 33 at 14th Street there. And there was some discussion about, uh, waiting for the right type of bricks. But that, the condition of that intersection there continuing to deteriorate, it seems to be accelerating. Well, you drive through there every day, just like I did, so you know.
I do, and it, it's a bigger project than just replacing the bricks.
Oh, sure.
The bricks are, um, yeah, they're not, they don't make those bricks anymore. It's more than just that one side. And so it's become a bigger project. So hopefully, I'll know more first of the year, what I can and can't do out there. Depending on what, yeah. The more, if I uncover it or undo anything, I'll actually do the whole thing. And I'm trying to figure out how to fix what I need to without upsetting the whole apple cart through this traffic control and clogging up the town. So, I'm working.
We know you are.
Interesting project. I thought you could just take the bricks out and go to back, but, yeah.
They're all bought, they're worn down bricks?
They've, they've been worn down. So the bricks are still in place, but they're about this thin, from a brick that was like this. Some of the bricks are only about this thick. So if I replace the ones that are missing against the ones that are worn down, it'll be uneven, so, yeah, it just became a bigger project than what we realized, so. Everything's stable, yeah. So, we'll have to figure out what we're gonna do before they pay. Because West Point will get 33 paid through town, up 217th Street, and then Cape Seal, the regular little streets that go from 33 up to 24th Street. That whole section, F Street, Lee Street, and all the side streets will get resurfaced. So, we're working. Anything else?
I have some, uh, in the second district, East River Road. I think you've been out there before, some of the constituents are calling where it hits. Middle Road comes out in one direction, then it jogs and goes left the other way into a subdivision. That road seems to flood every time there's even a small amount of rain. And I noticed there's a big barrel that's been put up there maybe six months ago. Nothing's been done about it, it just keeps getting filled up with water. And they say they could clean, but then they, I don't know if something was planned for that. And also, in my district, the second district, I mean, I travel a lot too because my family lives there, but that detour sign's been there for two years now. And I don't know what the detour sign is for. I notice you've got, uh, a bridge, got some painting on it now. But you are replacing one of them before that on now, go over. But that detour sign is around the curve, right where you almost get to Ellison Green. It's been there for two years, blinking and saying, follow the detour. Construction coming, but it never comes. And I don't know, where is the detour?
The message board, you mean. Yeah, yeah, that's the, yeah.
Don't forget about the, but it keeps coming.
That's a weight, that's a weight limit.
That should say the weight limit.
That should tell you the weight limit, the fifteen ton.
But it says use the detour. Where is the detour, everybody asked?
I feel like it's up there.
Okay, so is the detour just to remind people?
They're posted for, I wanna say three or fifteen tons. And we were out doing our preliminary work for, um, survey. We observed vehicles driving over it, that shouldn't. Um, so we were trying to kinda let people know that we just posted. I hope someone talks about that.
Right, but that's the detour.
We're trying to give them a warning.
But anyway, asking me where the detour is. Because you cut the Ellison Green, I don't know. And then the last thing is the, uh...
Yeah, I'm not talking now.
The, uh, we mentioned it several times before, to your constituent, too, while you were gone, the U, no U-turn side at 30 and 360 going back into town. It's still almost caused an accident the other morning. People don't wanna wait for that light in the morning, and maybe all of them notice it in the daytime. It's not a problem, but in the morning, people will not wait for that left turn lane at 30 and 360. They go up fifty feet and stop traffic on 360 to make the, the U-turn there where there's no turn lane. All they have to go is five hundred feet more. It's gonna have a designated turn lane, they can make a legal U-turn there. We've mentioned it, I don't know why there's so many, some studies, they say they were gonna do. Why does it need to be studied?
I'll go back and read it again and see if I can...
It's just a hazard. There's, there's a legal place to do it within another five hundred feet. And then it wouldn't block the traffic. Anyway, I just wanted to bring that up again. It's not just been done all year, so, thanks.
F Street. There is becoming a very large dip in there. And I don't know if you've come down that street lately. But, I don't know, apparently the ground is cropping.
16th Street, 17th Street.
Somewhere about there. John, do you know it, about it?
That's about right.
This has to be easier, eh?
It's been patched before, you couldn't miss it. And when you hit it, you definitely know it.
It's a big dip. I don't know if it's been bored on you, or, we've been looking into that ourselves. I don't know what's going on on either, but it's not, it's...
It's slowing down, obviously.
Yeah, it's a big dip, yeah.
That's all, man. Thank you. Alright, Merry Christmas. Alright, next item, is Patricia Norman in the swearing duty, son of America, board supervisor. And you, the elected ones, come forward also. Can I establish a number to order like? Alright, this is all great, man.
Just all standing in front, placing that. You're riding with your daughter off. And I'm just gonna read a name, and then I'm gonna do a, and you not have to beat up. When I'm toward, I'm just saying, uh, I mean, I've already started. I'm William Al Hodges, Travis General Moskowski, Steven A Greenwood, Charles Stewart Barber, Jr., and Edward M. Lawrence, Jr. Each of you sign this where all firm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Crown of Virginia. And if you will technically and impartially, um, I lost my place, discharge all meetings, come to the fund aid as a member of the board supervisor of King Wind County for term of office commencing on January 1, 2020 and expire on December 31, 2023, both by your consent.
I do. Yes, yes.
Yes, yes, I guess, yes. Yeah, I mean, all y'all come and sign. Phil, you're first. You've got to sign. And I can...
Yeah, twenty, twenty.
Stewart? You have a long hand, you've got to press a lot of the, and, uh... And y'all strong standing in my, in my hands, that's wonderful. I can walk up like that. The second half, yes. I'll sign, and I'll get, um, I'll push up for you. Okay?
Thank you.
Alright, congratulations.
Something on me, I'm so... What, are you telling me to sit down? Alright, our next item, is item C, Resilience Resolution 1972. West Point, the Rivian Project, John Edwards, West Point, town now.
Mr. Chairman Hodges, I'm on the board, Mr. Tavonary, in the room. Uh, here tonight to talk to you about a project that we've been working on for quite some time. Probably have had a number of conversations on this. We need to use money with the project. Town council's been working for a number of months now in the planning of a Rivian, uh, what we refer to as Riverwalk Park. Uh, this is an area that we utilize for a number of activities, including our food trucks and dentists, uh, and our farmer's market on Saturday mornings. The town council has decided to take advantage of that property and build a nice pavilion on it, uh, that would serve to give us an activity space that would help us to encourage tourism and further the economic development of Southern North County. In front of you, you see the proposed site, uh, at the corner of Chelsea Road and the old 14th Street. And that's what we're planning to build. Twenty-six hundred square foot pavilion, minus the fireplace in the back. I personally would like to see the fireplace. But enough plans, enough our, um, our hope is to have an activity space available, again, for the town and county activities, as, uh, as we plan them. And also, to be available for, uh, for local nonprofits, community organizations, and folks that wanna have events they were, um, funded for too. Opportunity to bring more people to that end of the county, enjoy the activities in the town. Maybe do some kayaking, things of that nature. Enjoy some of the things that we have offered there. And that's just a copy of the site plan. Uh, one of the things that we're proposing is to have a curvaceous parking lot. Uh, not your normal, uh, parking, uh, but an area that, once it's developed and grown out nicely, it'll work with those grass fields, put a little, um, underlayer of stone and a plastic mesh that holds everything together. So it doesn't have the normal stormwater impact that a lot of parking lots do, but it will be durable enough with the occasional, uh, purchase. I'm here tonight to ask you your support for this project. As Mr. Tavonary and I have discussed, uh, the town council was requesting your support up to half of the cost of the construction of the project. Do you have any questions?
Good. The, the parking service, we talked about it, what's the lattice work of, of stone, right? Underlaid by...
It's gonna be stone, and then it'll have a plastic, um, ported work.
Yeah.
With more stone on top floor and inside of it.
I forgot what you call the, it was an approximate of, sort of, number of spaces that would cover the whole...
Parking spaces? Uh, I believe there is forty, three parking spaces.
Just to let you know now, we even get walk-ins to this area for the food trucks. President, so, uh, and there's some thoughts about that, West Point Creek, it is palatable, uh, by kayak. Uh, and they may, at some point, be able to access that.
In the future, we're looking at building an overlook and maybe even a little floating pier here. Um, along with working with the local scouts to build a walkway around the perimeter that would connect and come back in. So, post city boy, searing on the creek there, and they could also, at some point in the future, paddle up by kayak.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think it's a good opportunity to partner with the town, um, on a project that can benefit the, the town and the county. You know, being the chairman of the MPA, as I am, anytime the locales can, can link up for a project that's mutually beneficial, I think it's good, um, good for all involved. So I'll happily move adoption of Resolution 1972.
I'll probably be second. You vote to study. Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Moskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Mr. Hodges?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Van Hill. Big deal, I look forward to it. Okay, our next item, 98, and that's update on fire emergency services. The town chief of administration, Warren, uh...
Good evening.
Good evening.
Short and sweet.
Alright.
You guys just tell me, that's too long.
I'm dying to jake it when you do it.
Always. Can I answer any questions about anything that we have on here?
So, I, I see we're achieving our adequate staffing levels.
Yes.
You know, at least at the beginning of January at this point in time. How, especially with that vacancy, how much are we having pull on our, our part-time pool right now? And how's that affecting our, uh, budget?
So, our part-time pool, we are pulling on, that is not where our biggest problem lies. Our biggest problem lies in the budget, because every time of our six-point pool. Because we have to work around the other sectors of the other department for, you know, for, excuse me, part-time people. So that's where we hit the big hit. If we had more full-time people there in position, absolutely. Then, in the long run, if we save this money, we could build a bigger overtime budget. And it would also work that we could just keep it running in the next few years. So if we had that built, and if the safety and had it built up, it will also help supplement salary salary.
Uh, yes, well, in your opinion, of what, if ideal conditions were around, how many more full-time people would you think would maybe at least just cover it? Maybe not perfectly, but at least help to alleviate some of the other issues?
I would, honestly, to get a function where we need to be sixty would be fantastic to start, and just look at it into the next year. Um, but we also need to talk to the normal changes. You know, if, if other stations are starting to have supplementation and pay staff, then our numbers are gonna change that also.
And that EMS bill and the current bill, is that year-to-date, or is that...
That is just a state-of-the-art.
Okay, great. So what's, what's the goal of that? What are we looking to collect thereby?
The goal we have set is three hundred thousand, but that is just a goal. This is our first year that we have been with this company. And it's also the first time where we're starting to be able to word out when people realize when you call 911, you are gonna get somebody. Um, so, we hope. So, that is gonna help, the student's gonna help with the momentum. And that will, after this first whole year and some of this bill, we will have an idea for being actioned for.
Okay.
And it's still a soft or passive bill?
Yes, sir. And it just, if anyone, that, that's a great question. Since we have started with them, working all the games at the go-forward, I have had some people during rebuilds, um, our members don't have to pay for air transport or any issue. So if someone approaches you and they have received the bill, please let them know. If that is our apologies, it's just butt through the cracks, and we will absolutely go and take care of it.
Oh, um, maybe not quite related, but this, by no sense of, we own a station, one, now, and that agreement we had with the actual volunteer, volunteer, what you call it, auxiliary, I guess.
Auxiliary?
And, have they done any fundraisers or something, that have given any impact that you've noticed so far?
So, so far, they have. Um, we have been working with them. Obviously, all the Santa runs, all of that from our station has been done through our ancillary. They run it out to the Boy Scouts. They do do a fundraiser monthly, but it's with a adult wrestling group. However, we are going to have to look at that. Although, those bring money, it's not the best use for the station, for the apparatus, after having meeting with our insurance company. Not the best thing for us, purely, probably. So we are gonna have to look at that. Um, otherwise, they are, they are starting to form and get together and work with us.
And just one last note, I know there's been a lot of online chatter, people complaining about the manner in which the Santa runs were completed this year. But I'll just say thank you for keeping it going.
Yeah.
Um, so it takes enough to run the department as it is, and to take extra time from our paid people and, and, and continue that tradition. Um, I just...
You're welcome. And honestly, that credit does not go... You're welcome, and honestly, that credit does not go to myself, that credit goes to the volunteers. Um, our case at Station One helped supplementing at the front cap, however, the volunteers completely handled that both at Station One and Station Two, so.
Pass that sentiment along for me if, if, if.
I absolutely will.
Thank you.
And they've got to understand that you can't tax the system regularly, or it's going to, you're free.
Correct, and we, as time goes on, we are going to look at the sand run and see what is actually best, um, the community is divided, and people really, really love it, look forward to it every year, and others don't, and change is hard. Um, so I, we know that that is coming, but it's for this year, it is done, and then we will figure out, maybe use brainstorming, find some other ways that we can keep the community involved and keep the spirit of the hobby.
Don't get me wrong.
But I didn't say that. We said stay off the truck at Station One, and we're being.
That's, that's what everybody's complaining about.
Yeah, that's what they're going to, and it's insurance and a safety issue.
It is, it is low, eh?
They do, they absolutely do.
And I just wanted to thank Bobby for diffusing that, uh, little glitch in the system, that we all know probably where that came from, but, like you said, the negative part of that, and I agree with Travis, we need to have something lined up with the system to do enjoy, that's kind of thing for Christmas season.
Absolutely.
Enjoy, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. A wonderful holiday.
You too. You too, Merry Christmas. Uh, next item is update on chief of fire emergency services interview and selection process, county administrator, Bobby Testin.
Gentlemen, three health interviews on Monday, December ninth, uh, we had three candidates come in. They were all qualified, uh, had a good day of interviews, and, uh, after the interviews were over, we had picked one, uh, as a top candidate, um, but after further discussions, uh, we decided that we could go ahead and continue searching, um, for a candidate. In the interim, uh, talking to my staff and some of the things that have been going on, uh, I decided to go ahead and request that, uh, the county chief, Lauren Muntley, step into the interim fire chief position for twelve months. Uh, with the understanding that in about six months, we will be posting the position and, uh, going out for recruitment. So, uh, she has accepted the interim position for twelve months, no longer, and I believe that, uh, the work that has been done up to date will continue. This will allow us to get through the budget cycle, it will allow us to ask the board to fund an appropriate budget for fire and rescue, and, um, be in a better position when we do bring in a permanent fire chief. So effective today, Lauren Muntley is the interim fire chief for King Warden County.
And is that proposed sign, is it? Is it a research and then the operations?
Uh, chief, fire chief, over.
All the, all the, yes. Remember, we were saying.
Correct. Yes, she was a battalion chief, now she'll be the fire chief.
Next item we got is update on planning and zoning ordinance revisions, director of community development, Ron Henna.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Quick update on the planning and zoning ordinance updates, uh, the planning commission, the last work session, final work through the last of the audibles, on our revisions, uh, they're being, uh, made to the draft. We'll have another work session in probably second, third week of January, make sure that we have a final draft that looks good, and then we want to take it from that point and start the postings, so that we can give the community feedback, and start the conversation with everyone about how this ultimate final draft and ordinance will come out.
Thanks for all the work. I've, I've been keeping up, you know, with, uh, with the work sessions, and then some marathon sessions and several of them, so, um, thanks to you, and thanks to the planning commission and your staff for all your work on so far. We're diving in on our end.
It's two hundred pages of a lot of stuff.
All right, our next item is resolution nineteen eight seventy-three, B-Dot, road acceptance, director of community development, Ron Henna.
Good evening. Uh, requests we made to the board of supervisors of King Warden County is to approve the addition of subdivision streets in state secondary system of highways. This action is pursuant to Cudahoula, Virginia statute, section thirty-three point two, get seven oh five, continuance of powers of county authorities, alternative procedure. Now, the roads listed on the B-Dot form AM four point three have been identified to be added to the secondary system of highways pursuant to the statutory provisions cited. In addition, we have a question of the right of way for which, we believe additional easements for cuts, fills, and drains as required is hereby guaranteed. Road question, park hollow, which will be state routes one, two, four, eight, and staff recommends approval of resolution nineteen dash seventy-two.
Hold on, I can answer that question. Ron, we, we have a slide discrepancy, we had it, Steve had wondered that we probably worked on. I think that resolution is supposed to be nineteen seventy-three.
Oh.
Which is. He did, when the town resolution was nineteen seventy-two, so, yeah, it's correct on the agenda, it's incorrect on the side, so. That's okay, thanks.
You vote to study.
No, no, just, just correct on that discrepancy, it's, um, denied, it's my own approval of resolution eighteen dash seventy-three.
Second. Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Skalski?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Our next item is the, uh, superintendent of supervisors, twenty twenty calendar, county administrator, Bobby Testin.
Gentlemen, what you have in front of you is a proposed meeting schedule for the twenty twenty calendar year. Uh, it pretty much mirrors what we have had scheduled for this year, uh, we have work sessions and board meetings scheduled, and there again, I believe last year when we were discussing this, the board had shown a preference to have, you know, work sessions and later meetings scheduled, and then if a change needed to be made, we'll address that on a specific basis. As you will note, that, uh, in March and April, um, the budget meetings are in there, uh, but they will be, um, the dates that pretty much mirror what we did this year and this past year as well. Uh, what I would like y'all to do is to review this document, and then when we come back to the July thirteenth, January thirteenth, twenty twenty meeting, um, we can finalize the schedule.
The only thing I don't see on here that we've done for the past couple of years is a, um, a public meeting or a town hall kind of thing here, is that, is that continuing?
No, are you talking about the one with the county administrator, the, uh?
Yeah.
I did not put that on.
Just something scheduled for you, or is that your opinion?
I did not put that, but we are going to continue.
Is that what you're saying?
I believe it is, yes.
All right, well, and the ones with the schools that are just standing there, just placing a lot of mass, what position, they don't really have to talk to the school, I know that's their.
Our next item is review of superintendent's bylaws for twenty twenty, county administrator, Bobby Testin.
Gentlemen, what you have in front of you is the draft bylaws for calendar review of twenty twenty, uh, there have been no changes made to it since the last change made, um, in twenty nineteen, again, I would ask that you text these and review them, and come back to January thirteenth, twenty twenty, um, with any recommendations or edits. And these will also be sent out to the newly eligible members, uh, for them to provide input as well.
Let's test that, you know, the council's had a chance to go over these yet, do.
I have looked through it, and I do, uh, have a few recommendations forthcoming or ideas that you might consider for possible ads.
Okay, thank you.
Our next item is, believe it or not, it's nine even eight o'clock, and superintendent's comments, and since it shouldn't be, you can read it all from the list.
Oh, right. Unfortunately, we had some of the board that showed up, it's just, um, I guess I'm going to say that I think it was very childish, and I think it's childish what it did last, um, but I guess it's a lot they didn't realize, and so that's the way that goes, and I appreciate everybody for your liking me, I appreciate it very much. Humble that you all would allow me to be on the board again, of course, that's great, and, uh, the new members are coming on board, uh, the next year, I think we're going to actually get a lot more done in the next four years, uh, you say that proudly, because we've had a lot of obstacles to come over this past four years. We have to deal with, uh, know everybody, and that is, and thanks everybody for coming, and I will say, I want everybody to have a mayor crystals and a happy year, and I can say that, that's me personally, and I can't, I don't know what legal things you can say, and I'm not going to say that for our wants, and thanks everybody for coming.
All right, um, real quick for my, my fellow board members, in the board information package coming out, um, you know, we do get this roundup of the MPPDC meeting, uh, in our packets that kind of just outline what we talked about, but, uh, it didn't outline it in too much, uh, detail, but we had a good discussion about solar projects in the region at that PDC meeting, talking about, um, pros, cons, local zoning, and, uh, some pre-class bills that are in the general assembly. Um, so it, that's going to be, in addition, all the other hot button issues that come up, that's going to be one that we're going to be monitoring very closely, um, especially as it pertains to local zoning authority, uh, because there's already been some bills that have been filed that would negatively impact our ability to zone and our ability to tax these facilities. So, uh, we'll keep you updated on that, but the MPPDC is working on it. Um, thanks everybody for coming tonight, um, I, like Mr. Greenwood, I'm excited about what the next four years can bring, um, I'm looking forward to Mr. Moore and Mr. Garber coming on, um, and, uh, I know that while we may not agree on everything that comes before this, we'll conduct ourselves in, in professional courteous manner, and, um, that won't that be exciting? But also quite boring for you regular meeting attendees, so, um, nonetheless, uh, yeah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everybody, and I look forward to seeing you back here in January.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out, we do appreciate the priority and the call, that we didn't have before, uh, for Mr. Pierceoff, yes, we're seeing and litter ourselves, it's, it's really bad, and it blows this town, the problem with some of that that you're talking about is, is probably a hundred yards off the road, so it's, it's difficult to do that wide spans, and he did it all, but we do plan on, I think, well, we probably will tune viewers, but I think they will, uh, participate in litter pickup, uh, with the solar and medicine, not doing one at the end of the, the summer, but, uh, we will be getting back on that and, and stating some for ourselves, and, uh, get to be able to pick up, I guess. Congratulations, Mr. Garber and Moore, and I'm looking forward to it. It's been a hell of a ride. But we did. But, uh, I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, and, uh, Happy New Year, and we will see you back, I guess it's going to be on January the thirteenth, and for the work session. And, hey.
Okay. Do you have the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's rather linked in.
I'll make a motion to go in to close sa- session of section two point two thirty-seven eleven, A one, A three, and A eight, dealing with deployment of individuals to boards and commissions, employment issue, uh, and for the acquisition of real property for public purpose. And also to obtain legal advice regarding a tax claim and conditional zoning pursuant to two point two thirty-seven eighteen.